And then on discussions and other businesses, we have business, we have proposed land acquisition map lot. Uh, let's see, one ten lot seventy, seen that before, Tiff District and Ad Hoc Committee. Capital Improvement Committee, representation, contractor bay facilities, discussion on definitions. Multi-tenant application changes, site plan review, planning board training, Hannah German. Did I what?
Oh, did I? I didn't call Victoria, oh, sorry, Victoria.
And Victoria.
She's upset over here.
Sorry, wasn't on my list, this is an old list. I'm gonna pencil you in right now, okay, in case I use this list again. No, I mean, this is an old list. Okay, let's get on with the approval of the minutes of August twenty second, twenty twenty four. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, motion by Mark to make to approve the minutes, is there a second? I'll say it. Second by Brandon, is there any further discussion on the minutes, any changes, any additions? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? We're onto that, we don't need any type of a.
Regional.
Regional impact, uh, so we'll go by that and write down to discussions, other business. And the item A is proposed land acquisition, that's map one ten lot seventy, that's the parcel down by the fire station that we did the lot line adjustment on. Uh, probably at meetings ago. So everyone's familiar with that. And what the selectmen are looking for is approval or recommendation by the planning board that that go through, that the town accept that piece. So.
Did we ever figure out, uh, what's available?
They will, the valuation of it there, what they're gonna say was worth?
Yeah, well, what, what could we build it, how much?
What can be built on, um, no, not really, but doesn't have much to do with it right now. Just all they're looking for is an approval or a recommendation that it be accepted. Because town isn't buying it, it's just they're donating it to the town. Yeah, and there would be room, yeah, to build on there, but who knows what it's gonna be used for. Future, but it will be there at least if if the selectmen.
It would probably be a, a, a good, uh, training area for the fire department.
It might be, a lot of woods down there, though, so they have to clear a bunch of that.
Teach them how to use the saws.
Well, yeah, sure, for their brush truck, right? So, any other discussion on that? If not, a motion would be in order to.
I'll, uh, make the motion to, uh, have the town accept that land swap.
Okay, motion by Michael York to ask the selectmen to accept that, uh, piece of land, is there a second?
He said it and I raised my hand, so.
So, Richard said it, so I'll go to Richard, Richard's second it, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, that's out of the business. Bring us down to the Tiff District and Ad Hoc Committee. So we have that in our package there. Little explanation of that, which is, uh, in a nutshell. Possibly setting up a Tiff district down here in West Swansea on Route Ten corridor. Uh, actually, basically the straight area of the Route Ten corridor there. Where, uh, Marles is and. You know, there were Nick's restaurant is and that type of thing. So, that. I guess they're, I think they're looking for. Just a representative, I guess, from the planning board, that sounds a bit, yeah, so. We wanna do that, and we can definitely talk about that too, what it is. If it benefits the town, if it doesn't benefit the town, that'd be talked about in the committee, that's probably gonna be formed to do that anyway. They'd set the boundaries of that as to what would be in it, and again, just to be brief about it, the Tiff districts like we had over there in North Swansea there. Um, they're assessed, when the district is formed, it's assessed at whatever value it is today. And then any improvements to it, like buildings put on it, or additions to buildings, would be improvements to those properties. Any amount that is assessed over there from year to year goes towards paying off bonds to put in infrastructure or any, uh. Water, sewer, roads, things like that, so.
So just the difference?
Just the difference, as it, as, I don't know, if they're set up for maybe fifteen years or something like that, I don't know, but however long the district goes. It's used for that amount of time to pay those bonds down.
Right.
And if there's extra money, they can use it to go back into the tax base if they don't need it all, you know.
Right, it's, it's looking to do the same thing they did over in North Swansea on the Sappod Drive property.
It's exactly the same thing, yeah, it's a Tiff district over there. Yeah, and they have a, they have an end, beginning and an end to them.
And that was coming up, the end's coming soon.
Didn't really work out the way they had hoped it would work out, because there weren't too many improvements under that property. I mean, private improvements under the property, there are improvements done by the town to that property, but. Not really got too many business, there are now, we did the end of that, but. They, they're thinking about the same thing over here anyways. And it sounds to me like the improvements they're talking about are, as I listed, the West Swansea Water Company, possibly purchasing that and a way to. Pay a bond down to purchase that company. And if that were to happen, there'd have to be improvements, there'd have to be a water tower somewhere, probably on this side of the road, over.
Uh, not cobble, but, uh, up on the, uh.
Christian Hill area.
Christian Hill.
There, there'd have, probably have to be a water tower, or over where, I think it's across from Riverbend there. That, that's a possible place, so they could put one up in there, I, but, that, that would have to be done.
Thanks.
So. Above and beyond the purchase price of the water company, there'd be some big improvements going on there, they'd have to be in order to.
Well, I'm sure the, the, uh, septic system's gonna be, uh, that's gonna have to be improved too. As you build along, it's gotta get more capacity.
Oh, are you talking about the, uh. Yeah, definitely, well, that, that is at capacity now, pretty much so.
Right.
It's not, it's not a design capacity, but it's at workable capacity, or what they call load capacity.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, that'd be have to be in and out, but, but both of treatment plant too. But with a treatment plant, um, as we are now in ordinance, there's no industrial waste accepted into that treatment plant, so that'd only be residential into there, unless the ordinance has changed. And you allow pre-treatment and then industrial into those plants, but the lagoon systems. Are kind of fragile when it comes to the, uh, industrial type of stuff in there, meaning you can kill the plant real easy. Uh, activated sludge like Keen has or something like that, they've got, uh, stores of bacteria that they can pump it. If some set of bacteria gets killed off there, they can pump them from another tank, replenish them and keep on going, but. A plant like that can't do that, so if you kill a lagoon, you're in trouble. There is room, there is room set aside for expansion there, if, if they want to put another lagoon in, they probably wouldn't do that. They would probably either take out a lagoon and use some of the property, put in a, a more mechanized part of, you know. Treatment, I don't know exactly what they would take, but there are mechanisms that, that. Make the treatment a little quicker. So they would probably do that instead of expand with a lagoon down, I guess. But all depending on the cost, the lagoon is cheaper to put in than that, still, but. You can treat a lot more mechanically on a smaller space than you can with a lagoon system. But yeah, that'd, that'd be another one of the ones that'd be, water system and lagoon system probably have to be done first.
What about the, the West Swansea Water Company? Would, would they be able to expand into Amber? I mean, increase volume, version of it up? And create an industrial layer.
Yeah, and if they were, if they remained private, they probably wouldn't do it. Because the financing is so tough for private water companies to get, as opposed to if a municipality owns the system. Then it opens up a big doorway for a lot of different ways to fund that. But as a private company, they probably wouldn't do it.
It's not cost effective for a private company to do it.
No, it really isn't, right now, they are at capacity, but again, they are not at. Call, so-called design capacity, they're at, uh, working capacity.
Right.
Meaning that they have that, I think it's a five thousand gallon tank up there. So, in order to add on to the system, they'd have to add, add more storage capacity. Either another tank or a tower, something like that, because of the, the state regulations as the flow that comes out through there for fire protection. So, there's, there's a lot of water up there, and it could sustain. Playing, you know, three times more than there's sustaining now, but it's just this matter, it's a matter of storage.
I believe they have three wells, but they're only using primarily one.
Yeah, they're using two wells.
But they're very.
Two wells are, are close, yeah, they're like, they're gravel pack wells, they're about eighty feet deep. And each well is about three hundred gallons a minute, something like that. Then the other well is maybe an eighth of a mile away at the most.
And the one on California.
That's a California one, yeah, that, that was a seven hundred and fifty gallon a minute well by itself. And that one hasn't been used for a long time. But yeah, they could put that on there, I don't know if they'd ever even have to put that on there because of all the water that they've got with the, the other two wells. But if they wanted to expand now, they could use the capacity that they have now in those wells to do it. And, uh, it's just a matter of storage, and of course adding on to the system or piping. But now, yeah, it's. They've been starting on Homestead Woolen Mills building down here, cleaning it out, they haven't come to see us, obviously, we haven't seen them, but they're starting down there to clean it all out, so they'll be in at some point with the plan down there. And it'll be interesting to see what the state says about that, letting them hook on to that water system or not, because of the capacity issue.
Residential.
Yeah, residential, yeah. So, we'll see what happens there.
Which is dumb, because wasn't that put in specifically for the mill back in the day?
Yeah, it was. For the mill, it, it was a manufacturing, yeah, processed water.
And the sewage plant was too.
Well, no, sewage plant wasn't put in for the, for the mill at all, because that's why the mill had to move all their stuff up to Claremont. Because Claremont had a sewer system up there, but this one town here didn't. And then, I think it was about a year after, I worked down the mill then, we moved all this, a lot of machinery up there. And anyways, about a year or maybe two years later, they put in a system down here, so.
So did he move everything there?
We just, we just let them build across the road, that's all.
Go into it anyways, because it was gonna be a lagoon system and the pre-treatment would have. You wouldn't have been able to pre-treat, really put it in there too much, I don't think. They've come a long ways with, with mills and dying and processing that, and now vegetable dies, things like that, they have, you probably could easily put in a lagoon system, but. Not that, but anyway, yeah, they did own the water system, and then they turned it to domestic water system after that, the mill closed in. But they're gonna need it for fire protection down there, and they're gonna need it for domestic water down there, so, we'll see.
Well, Chair, you know so much about water and sewage, uh, maybe you should be the representative.
On the Tiff District there? If you prefer me to be, yeah, I live right here in town, yeah, and then.
I'll make that nomination.
You will nominate. Okay.
I thought I was, yeah, perfect.
That's got self, uh, be the representative on the Ad Hoc Committee for the Tiff District in West Swansea, seconded by Mark, is that correct?
You're not here today.
We will.
Yep, all right, I'll nominate Victoria, pretty sure.
It's up to Victoria, you wanna accept it on, before we vote on, we can still vote you in, but.
Yeah.
It was on, it was for a backup, you said.
But knowing Victoria, she'll wanna go to the meetings, she'll know what's going on, yeah.
I don't know if we need a backup, but I'm just doing this just in case.
Just in case.
I mean, I think it's really interesting, important work, I just, I got these counts, right, I just don't know why they made.
We don't have to nominate one now, we can just nominate the representative, see if we need one later and, and the board can decide.
I would love to do it.
If you need a backup, we'll bring it up.
All right, so Mark, did you second that?
I don't know, I think everybody's seconded here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna second, okay, then, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, I'll be your rep on that. No, I didn't oppose it. So.
It just made sense to me.
Now we go to the Capital Improvements Committee, and we are, now we're represented. Right?
Yes, I'll, I'll serve on it again. Yes, I wanna be able to spend everybody's money.
So, are you, are you fine with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then you're nominated, Mike, okay, you make the motion then.
I'll make the motion to nominate Mike.
Okay, motion by Brandon to nominate Mike York to represent us on the, uh, Capital Improvements Committee, is there a second? Second by Richard, is there any further discussion?
Little bit, this, um, can you guys report back to us?
Sure.
Yeah.
I've even got the stuff from last year still. So if you wanted information. No, it's not because of, this stuff is gonna be forwarded and we're just gonna update it, that's basically what we do. Oh, sure, sure, yeah.
No problem. After every meeting, I mean, you guys have meeting, you start meeting in the.
Yeah, we, we meet right through, usually right through October, because we have to get our recommendations to the select board. So they can publish everything and have hearings and stuff like that.
And how often do you usually meet?
I think about what we buy, what's a week in October, right? Yeah. Yeah, a, and I gotta say that, being on it last year, Steve, the chairman does one heck of a job, he knows his numbers cold.
He does, I know.
Yes, he does. Yeah, he does a great job.
What they do is they apply each department head, we come through a meeting and discuss what their needs are in terms of large capital expenses. They ask the department head, or can you wait for until, you know, twenty twenty seven, or do you need this by twenty twenty six? And by doing that, they are able to plot out, you know, expenditures that can, over time, without raising taxes, they can do that. Uh, the expenses are plotted out over time, but that, they get all of that data summary.
Department heads, right, and we, sometimes we even talk into spending a little money, sometimes we talking to, uh, spend the less money, sometimes we take, okay, we're gonna move this. Back because of the budget. But we, we're trying to be responsible with spending the taxpayers' money. We don't make the final determination, we just do recommendations to the select board. And I believe those meetings are still open to the public. I don't think, I don't think any government, yeah.
So, yeah, if you bring us up to date after every.
I shall do that, yes.
I'll try and do the same, and if not, just remind us, anybody, and then we will bring.
And while, while we're on that subject of committees.
Second, we got a motion on the floor, seconded, we got a motion by Brandon, seconded by Richard. To nominate Michael York for our capital improvement program, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, we'll be on that, so what were you gonna say?
Payback, I was gonna say, we're talking about committees that Scott, myself, and Mark are on the Fire Advisory Board Committee. Those things are also open, so we would appreciate you coming up and, and talking to us to what you think we should have.
Well, we can talk right here and we can bring it to the.
Right, right. That, that's what we're, I'm trying to say, is that anybody here that, uh, wants to give us feedback, to bring back to the committee, they're more than welcome.
Yeah.
But we've only had one person show up at, uh, one of the hearings, so.
More than we have tonight, well.
We had one other person besides this gentleman.
So, yeah, I, on that fire committee, it's the Fire Station Advisory Committee, I think is the official name of this committee. So where we're at now is that. See, did we, we think we narrowed it down.
To the one site, yeah.
To that one site, which is the, was it three twenty one, I think it's.
Yes, it's three twenty one.
Three twenty one Old Homestead Highway, which is a piece of land that the town bought several years ago to put a fire station on. So there were several different areas that, that the, uh, committee was thinking about. Narrowed it down and voted on that one, that one's going to be the one that, that the group is gonna focus on, so. That's the same. So that brings it to the actual fire station itself, and the change in that kind of has to be in size. Because if, for instance, if we were seeing that as a site plan, as a, as a planning board. And we had, uh, denied it, like the town denied it like last year. They couldn't bring it up to us by statute even, up to us, unless there are substantial changes. And it's kind of something like that, you know, you don't bring the same exact plan up to the town because.
They just rejected it.
True, yeah, you're not gonna do it, go anywhere, so if there's a substantial change, then you bring it up. So, the land is not a change, so that leaves the station, so we're, we're sizing the station down. Is what we're doing as the substantial change, which hopefully would bring the price tag down. Again, which is a big sticking part, I'm, I'm pretty sure in the whole thing. One thing was that it, I think a lot of people figured it was too much, they didn't need all this stuff, you know. Uh, we were at a meeting, I think last night, there, you know, it looks like there was a movie theater in there with the conference room, there's, there's a lot in there. So, um. If, if we, if we had seen it, if, if we had seen it in the planning board here. We'd probably have to figure a substantial change was like, like fifty percent reduction, that would be a substantial change. A third deduct, I don't know, a quarter of a reduction probably wouldn't be a substantial change. From the planning board point of view, I don't think, somebody came in, site land like that, so. I think we're gonna end up with something like about a third of the building reduced. That's back and forth, the, we have some, I, I did a drawing of it, we had a meeting last night, we have a small group that, that met. For sizing it down and seeing what can fit in there, so. You've still got the two double bays, like everyone saw in that whole plan there, and they're back-to-back engines in there, can get out either side. And then on the other side, where the offices, things are going to be. That, we're figuring for a second floor up in there, so it'd be, instead of a step in the roof, like we saw in the last running, it would be just one straight roof across. Down, and about a third of the building missing, and then whatever can fit in there and what they need, uh, will be put into that. So, it looks like maybe two offices instead of the three offices. No regular work area, no big conference room, a small area there where they can have meetings and things. And then, of course, the upstairs part is kind of just excess space or future development or future needs for the fire department, because. Another thing coming up in the meetings there is that they're running out of volunteers. And they can't get volunteers, they can't entice anyone to volunteer, and they think it's because. That for the, I think it's the far, far, firefighter one.
Right.
Grade one, that the, the training is exactly the same for the part-time guys, the volunteer guys. As it is for the guys that get paid like up to Keen and, and the other fire station that pays them. So, they figure that nobody's going into that, because they do all that training for volunteering, when they can do all the training and get a job that way. So, that's what they figure.
Yeah, and the other issue in Swansea is the fact we have maybe ten at the most active firemen.
Yeah, there aren't that many anymore, right, going down and down, down, but.
And, and, and a fires, a fire station is like, you don't really wanna pay for it, sort of like insurance until you need it. Then you want it.
Yeah. It is, yeah, we've. Well, we've put one in the drawing that we had last night, we, we did last night, we put one in there. So, i- it's wise to do that, like we have a lift right here, it doesn't have to be that very big, but it's wise to do that.
Yeah, and we did also keep the, uh, ten-foot doors in there, correct?
The doors exactly, didn't change anything in the bays.
Yeah.
We put an extra set of stairways in the, in the, uh, personnel part of it, so you can get to that upstairs part both ways, and a fire exits both way. Both ways and an elevator or a lift in through there.
So, so everybody will understand too, uh, right over here was a ladder truck. If you watch that ladder truck back in and look at it, there's maybe a half an inch to an inch clearance. So, the fire trucks.
But they built it that way, I mean, they put that on there so they could put that truck in.
Looking across the street, I've never once heard of hit the building with it.
Not only the ceiling when they shut the door.
You're gonna say, you had something to say, Richard.
Your new proposal, then you're taking away the, the, uh, police department being in the.
Yeah, it's, it's strictly, it's strictly a satellite fire station, if the department, fire department, they wanna make it into their main fire station, that's up to them. This is just a replacement for station number two.
Right, the, the other thing is, uh, will it be a rear, rear entrance for the, uh, for the trucks? Meaning when they can come back, they go around the back and come forward.
Yeah, there will be, the way it's set up is, is it's like, I don't know, eighty-eight feet long, probably that way, and there are two doors on either end of it. And the, and the trucks are like back-to-back, so they're heading out both sides of it, that, so they can get out either way. And it'll fit four pieces of equipment in there.
Have we decided to, and that plan to bring the station forward a little bit?
Yeah, that's the other thing, is if we decrease the size of the station, we can move it forward on the plot. And not maybe spend so much in filling that, that sloped off area of land in back of it there, and save somebody, some money and fill with that. Oh, brilliant, but there won't be as much payment up there.
If anybody's interested in going to our next meetings on Monday at, uh, right, right here, at five o'clock.
Yeah, five, and, and by then we'll have another drawing, because last night. Um, I think it was Mike of the Fire Department there, he had a, a. A silhouette or, or a small scale drawing of what he wanted, on there, what he figured should be in there, and again. They kept asking me, but I, I don't care how it's configured, because I'm not gonna be using it, those guys are gonna be using it. But it was, it was ten feet longer or ten feet wider than the one that cuts a third off of the building. So I'm gonna draw one up that way with the extra ten feet on it there, and we're gonna look at it at our committee meeting on Monday and decide. What, cause it's visual too, you know, when we all look at our, the plans here, it's a lot visual as to how it strikes you. And if it looks like about the same size as the other fire station was. It's probably, people are just saying, oh, I don't know what that is, you know, you know, but it's, has to look a little different too, so. That's what we're gonna do, we're gonna decide which one to go with, then the plan is to bring that to the selectmen. To see if they will allow a little bit of money to bring it to the architect that, excuse me, drew in the first place. And if she can render it down and make sure that code and everything matches for it, the code fits. Then, we can get, um, a basic cost analysis, that's what it might cost. And from maybe several different bidders out of it, rather than just one, I think they said they had several different bidders and DEW is the cheapest. But I know when we had bidders here, when we did this building, DEW was most expensive, so. We'll see how that goes. Yep.
So, the size reduction to the building, that's taking into account that. This reduction will still be able to fit enough apparatuses for the additional wall that housing.
Yeah, well, we aren't, we aren't touching the bays for the fire trucks at all, oh, we're, we're just reducing the personnel part of it there, and, you know, they. They'll have to squeeze in, or they can put in what they need to put in there and make use of the space how they wanna make use of it, but it's just. Basically, it's to cut the square footed down, get the price down, move the building forward, get that land cost down.
And the way we're trying to build it is for, in the future, we could expand if we need so.
It'll be expandable, yeah, right. But if it's two floors over the personnel part, they've ended up with extra space upstairs there, so. If they need it for training or whatever they're gonna be doing there, it's up to them again, they wanna do that, and then, again, it was up to them whether they wanted to make that their main fire station or not, or it will be.
Essentially, you wanna make sure it meets the needs.
Right.
Um, we reduce the cost. Uh, and we'll be discussing how to market it, because, you know, it's failed numerous times, we're in the same location. But any other location involved transaction, that was gonna delay it another year, and actually buy cost more money, so. So I went back on this five acre lot, which is, you know.
And in fact, yeah, in fact, it's a, it's probably a safety thing with the fact that most of our growth is right over there in North Swansea with the two main projects. So, it makes sense to have it a little bit closer, I think.
We've also gone with a wood frame building, like the EMS building over here, maybe not designed like that, but that's a wood frame building over there. Because it was a metal building, and in discussions with DEW, they said that the metal frame buildings are pretty much. Designed and built, you know, factory-wise, when you go changing things in there, that's when you get the custom metal building, and that's when it adds a whole bunch of cost to it.
Right.
So, and the stick frame building can be built by more than people that specialize in metal frame buildings, so. It might be cheaper that way, and the stick building itself is gonna be a little cheaper, so bringing costs down that way too.
So it can be flat roof or pitched roof?
It'll probably be pitched, that has been brought up, but if it's a stick frame building in size, it'll probably be pitched.
Better chance.
And with trusses, yeah, and, and, yeah, the better chance of passing, you think, yeah. Yeah, they did a good job over that EMS building. So, we have a different architect, that guy was the one that was the architect for here. So that's where we're at with that. And we'll let you know how it goes.
Make sure the roof matches every other roof around.
Do you think someone will show up at our meeting?
I think somebody might.
So.
Yeah, is there anything that anybody here wants us to bring forward to the, to that committee, uh, you can think of, concerns?
The only other thing I would think of, but I'm sure it's already been approached, is the FAA glide path. How high you're going to be with that roof. But I think the, you're going to be still right off the edge of the end of the runway. The length.
Yeah.
So you, you'd have to be concerned with that.
We aren't right in the glide slope though for zero two, if that's, right, yeah, I mean, zero two runs like this.
North south.
Yeah, and then this is right to the, in the.
To the right.
Yeah, it's not like really in a glide slope, but it's in the, the tapered, uh, if you can imagine it.
The tone going out.
Yeah, that's where that is in.
Is there, is there a navigation?
A navigation easement for that property? Not that I'm aware of.
No, I don't think so. Actually, the former owners of the land first, they had to take down all their pine entries.
Oh, that's what you mean, FAA usement for that, yes. Well, there is, yeah, for that, but our forty-five foot, this probably isn't gonna be forty-five feet, but our forty-five foot. Footprint would probably fit in there, but I don't think that that would go into that slope, we have in our zoning a picture of that slope. Well, maybe in our small one here, but we have them over the town hall, that slows, shows that glide slope and sold everything there.
If we have to, we'll go to a flat roof. If we have to agree with that roof.
Because of that, yeah, but I don't think so, I think we'll be good with that likewise.
It's a one one story.
Yeah.
Well, put a cellar hole in it, make a make the chief's office down, so.
Well, well, we say all part, you know, we got a long ways to go.
If anybody's getting ideas on how we can publicize this and educate the public, we would welcome that information.
Brings us to item D. Contractor bay facilities, discussion and definitions. So let's see, you know, I was thinking about this, the contractor bay, we've been talking about it for a while there. And it and it seems almost as if we're. Approving a building style and not a use, you know, the planning board is about. Approving actually, yeah, approving uses to land, land use and not necessarily a building style. If a building is put up regardless of what style it is, if it fits on the property, meets all the set back requirements, plant requirements, everything else. Then the building can be there and it's up to the planning board to see if the use is appropriate for that building and in that zone. So if we go, you know, putting a use as a contractor bay. We'd have to designate what designate what that building actually is, that it's it's a bay and then we'd be telling him. Uh, how to build a building there, which we have no business doing. We do have, regulating what goes in that building, for instance, you know, we, the base hill road went down here. Which didn't go in, not yet anyway. That building fit on that site and they still could have put that building up down there and it just would have been a matter of what uses could go in there. For that business zone that it was in. But they, you know, they didn't decide to build it because of the whole hoo-ble about it, but again. A building is a building and the use is a use, you know, we approve different uses for different buildings, a lot on this board here. And again, telling them what kind of a billing to bill probably isn't under our purpose to do.
Well, quickly on that, uh, there's a additional document that I gave it up to everybody. With the supposed definition highlighted in the. And that, that would be called mixed use development. Nice and broad, covers a lot of different possible structures that could go up. And whatever districts we we decide uh is appropriate, but. It's a lot less limiting, I'm hoping it's it's and more easily attracts developers to build stocks. Uh, if if people see contracted bay facility. I I have a feeling that they're gonna be deterred by how limited that that seems. And so I I I think if we're gonna do this, I think we should be broad. I think it's a good definition, like covers a lot of different uses. And I think that's that's where staff landed and I I put it on the on the papers, so you're gonna have to discuss it. Uh, Mark and Victoria also had an attachment. That I'm sure we we would like to discuss, uh, but I I I think staff kind of got away from. Of that, the more we researched this topic, the more we saw what other municipalities had success with. Uh, more municipalities have more success with going multi-use definition. You can't really try to, you can't really define these things as a contractor, anything, because. It's just gonna put too many limits on it right off the gate, and I I think we're gonna be revisiting the definition. Again, in five, five-ish years, you know, we do that, so I'd rather just do it once, call it a day, so. Hopefully we can discuss it.
Okay, if 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 we're not, as Scott was saying, uh. Able to kind of um sign will, what's going in to a place. Where is our common sense as to the neighborhoods and responsibilities that we have? To protect in the area in its design and what what I'm kind of thinking about. Is, okay, we have a a corridor down twelve, down ten. And we we've somewhat protected North Swansea Route thirty-two. But in looking at at these areas, these three different areas. West Swansea was was, I guess, not any longer, but they they mill town. Route ten through, excuse me, Route twelve uh through its evolution and everything. Is basically a large business, et cetera, it used to, there used to be a railhead. For companies there uh and used, and North Swansea has always been a a. Uh, community of housing and and residential and that goes back into the uh twenties. For the last cent century and what we're looking at or saying is, okay. You have a piece of land here and you can take and do whatever you want to it, irregardless of what. Is already there in the town, what if the town, what the um area looks like. And I I don't think that that's what the people really want, I think, you know, I think we should be a little more cognizant of what. We're going to propose to put in there and what what is there already, whether that the message.
Right, and that that's not quite what the definition says, I I I wanted to call out permitted. So in the definition, it does say two more and more different permitted uses. Uh, and so if those uses aren't already permitted in that zone districts, I mean, you're not gonna be able to have. Uses that aren't already permitted in the districts. In the developed, uh, I think the thought with this. Is to more clarify what's gonna be built there, so if somebody comes in with a proposal for a mixed use development. I mean, we already have the mill as one. The the mill is a prime example of this, we have possibly residential going in. To the part that's unoccupied now, you have a recreational facility and you have different multi-story spaces. And it's a prime example of what the space looks like.
Yep, it would be, you know, in that garden.
Yeah, I trust the planning board, this is this going off of what's in there, I know like what right there. It's way less about the design of. These buildings and like what's actually going in them and more so about mature of the ordinance. And uh defining what's supposed to be in all these different districts. And then once the site plan comes to all the dirt to you guys, this table. Then, you know, you figure out how to uh manipulate it a little bit so that it fits that. Rule of character, if you will, and uh goes off of the ordinance as well.
That's primarily what we do and have been doing and will continue to do and with things like the um. Well, setbacks, one thing, height for another thing and for landscaping for another thing and fences and berms and those types of things. That are written in our ordinance to protect the residential uses from the industrial or business type uses are are already in there. But I know you're you're saying that the those businesses don't fit in there, but the only way to change that is to change the use or allow the use in that zone. And again, whatever zone it is. The person here might be happy with that, but a person here that owns that piece of property that thought of maybe putting in a small business or something isn't happy with them. And they both pay taxes, you know, one gets what they want, the other one doesn't get what they want, so it is a balancing act that the planning board has to do.
I have a problem with similar language. Okay, anytime I see uh not related to.
Steve, you always have a problem with some of that language there, what what which one is it this time?
No, no, he's reading the uh the one in yellow.
I mean, really, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'd say the same thing, so.
It does not say that. Residential office, interior recreation, like uh like industrial. And then my next problem is other miscellaneous uses.
That in that that get, that's that's intended to give you guys flexibility when reviewing something, which I I think is important.
What is a miscellaneous use?
Something that's not listed there. But it still has to go to what is permitted in that zone, it can't be something that is not permitted in the zone. No, but the ordinance says that, this doesn't have to say that, but the ordinance does say if it's listed as a permitted use in that zone. Then you can do it, if it's not, you can't do it regardless of what that does.
We're not gonna be able to load all the. We could get it that way. Yeah, however you guys wanna phrase it, I I it's important, otherwise it's just gonna say et cetera.
How much, just other permitted uses, because that's what it's gonna be, other permitted uses in the zone, yeah, okay, other permitted uses.
It is implied because we do say permitted.
Exactly.
Earlier in the definition, so I I would push back against it, but that's what you guys would like to see then, what it have.
So are we saying? We should, you look, use mixed use as opposed to contracted bed, because the reason we got contracted bed is because somebody came forward. With a plan for contractor bed.
Yeah.
And, you know, they pretty much defined them how they like them to want them to be defined.
Yeah.
And we didn't necessarily agree.
But again, it all boils down to the uses there, though. I mean, not the building itself, contractor bay itself, but the uses inside of there and they're they would change.
I like where we started, I I think contractor bay facilities, it's a very nice sounding uh phrase. But it it I think it puts too many limits on somebody who owns land in the city, I mean. You could put all of these uses in a contractor bay facility, but you were gonna call it. Uh, but it but just the the phrase contractor bay, it just made it a bit too.
Precise, right.
A bit too specific, I think, um. I again, I'm happy, this is why, this is why we brought it, because I know you guys have a document, uh, you guys wanna talk more about your attachment.
Well, what I'd like to do before we do that is go up to a higher level for a moment, and that that is that. We certainly want to do what we can to make it possible for people to develop their like the essence of progress. But I feel like we also have a responsibility as a board to make sure that we're keeping an eye on surrounding uses. Um, you know, the the effect as as Richard was saying, the effect on the neighborhood. But also, we're charged with health and safety kinds of issues, so um we have to think about. You know, is it appropriate for certain uses to be happening on the same lot and and. Just to give a concrete example, that when Mark and I were talking, um, we we started thinking, well. If we're talking about, and and I don't wanna get, you know, barren in the idea of contractor bay facilities, but one of the thoughts we had was that. Our original vision was that these would be places where contractors would be, you know, coming in, dropping all their stuff, picking up their vans, leaving. But there wouldn't be retail uses at the same time, because those are very different kinds of. You know, if you've got lots of people stopping, you need a certain amount of parking for people to come in and, you know, shop somehow. Um, that that there are just some uses that aren't necess, we need to evaluate. The site plan in a different way depending on what's happened there, you know, so. If if it's gonna be a place where contractors are storing lots of stuff and it's sort of like a glorified self-storage situation. Except they're actually maybe fabricating the stuff there too, um, we really wanna have. The intensity of use of, you know, me bringing in all my, you know, my chainsaws and my lawn mowers and all that stuff to get fixed. You know, which is, it's a very different kind of circulation pattern, it's a different kind of intensity, so um. That's where I I I I think if we're going to do, this kind of reminds me of the old planning and development. Back in the day, it kind of makes me think of that where where the entire site is developed as a whole, sort of like a little mini. Commercial area that also has residential built into it.
Yeah, I think the difference there is planning development, you set your, it sets different setbacks and building standards and general. That's not quite what we're doing here, but it does, yeah.
Having so many different uses, but the idea at that time is that you kind of lock into um. You have, you you have an idea what the big picture is, it's not sort of, you know, add something else on and add something else on, it's a very sort of cohesive. Approach to developing the parcel as a whole.
Yeah.
You know, which feels really different from what we're talking about with these contractor bay facilities. Feels, so just about.
So I I'll use an example of where I'm from, those. Population wise, we'd be different, density wise, everything, uh, well, like if we're talking about proximity and how things might work. Cause I believe that this definition of, it makes a space for a case-by-case basis. So like, if we're talking about proximity, like if you take Main Street, King, you have. Uh, you have that garage, I forget what the garage is called, but you have that garage, you have a bar.
City Tire.
City Tire. Then you got, you have a flower shop, tattoo shop, that that's all within a minute of walking. So like, it's very much so case-by-case, cause like, that works, you know, and some of those buildings where I don't make sure they do have dwellings above them. So I feel as though.
That was like, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, so and and again, case-by-case, you know, but I feel like this uh this definition kind of. Give space to have that case-by-case.
So devil's advocate, let's say that um. If it's if it's this wide open and say uh something is is presented to us that um. We really don't feel, how how do we, how do we screen out inappropriate uses? Because this is basically do whatever you wanna do, you know, and there are gonna be situations where it's just not sensible.
And there's a fairness to the applicant to understand that, reading our regulations. Before they even go further to prepare to come to the board.
And I I think maybe a way to to imagine that would be to pretend that we're an attorney who's representing an unhappy. Next-door neighbors, okay, so what would our case be? How would we manage that?
If we have a good case, if we have good reason to deny something, then we're good. It it can't be in that, it can't be in the definition, it has to be in the RSA as a good reason, like through safety, which you brought up, safety and things like that. To deny an application, it has to be, you know, a solid foundation of reasoning behind denying safe.
I think changing miscellaneous to permitted resolves several problems.
I don't think, Victoria's talking about something different there, I think, as to how it it fits in as to one business operating right alongside of another business that might not. Fit, isn't that what you're talking about, Victoria?
For example, with with, to use no specific, but a contractor's storage bay facility, I felt like. Because I didn't know who was going into it, I didn't know how. What the best lay, you know, how to evaluate the layout of the buildings and circulation and the parking. I just didn't feel like I had any standards that I could measure that against and it feels even more uh. That that issue feels even greater with um a definition for a mixed use development that is. As wide as this, you know, how how do I, like, I I just don't know how to do a good job, you know, reviewing a site.
It does have to be on a second, it does kind of have to be on a case-by-case basis, like the one over here in in West Swansea, is it up to?
Uh, California Street.
California Street, that's that's this type of a thing and and we approve.
Yeah.
Buildings without anybody going in there, we just approved the building for mixed use in there and they had a site plan that was individual one. And we looked at it as it was pertaining to that area there and we'd be doing the same to any other one at all, I think like that.
So let's say we get an application for a protector's storage base, so would we use this definition to review it?
Oh, we would use our site plan regulations and what's allowed in that zone to review it and, you know. They would tell us if they told us what was going in there, then you could, okay. Review it for traffic and those types of things, but if you can't. And they build it and they want something go in there that doesn't have enough parking or something like that, then that's on them, that's, you know, they've done it to themselves. Something else has to go in there that would fit, but they've limited themselves to, the planning board didn't limit them. Are you gonna say something?
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether or not if if we do change miscellaneous or if you lead it in there. What RSAs would back us up?
For what?
For a denial of something.
If it didn't fit?
I'm just saying.
The denial would have to be that it didn't fit our zoning, specifically our zoning, something like that, or that it was unsafe, something in that area there. But you just can't deny it because you don't, you don't like the design.
Right, you know, but if it comes in, the person who says miscellaneous, this is my miscellaneous use.
And the planning board will look at it and say, well, this use is in in our zone. And then planning board will look at it and say, well, this use is in in our zone, you can't use it in that zone, so that one's out, or this one is allowed in that zone, so that one's in. You know, it all falls under what our zoning is, not necessarily what that definition is.
We get into the challenge.
You don't, it's either allowed or it isn't, or if there's a chance like the, what was it, service, service industry, your service establishment over here, then the challenge goes to the CBAs. To interpret it. But if it's an allowable use, they can do it. See.
A builder and us. Can. Design and approve a building. For knowing what the use is going to be. However. In three years. That.
Exactly.
Pass the new design and build or authorized building. Building that is. Not functional for what the use is.
For that, you said it was that it came under a site plan review for.
It's.
And that happens a lot here too, like a tire warehouse down there, that building not a warehouse anymore, it's well, they're have a couple of different businesses down there now, but. Again, they just come into the planning board and say, we wanna use this building for such and such, and the planning board decides whether they have enough parking, enough landscaping, enough whatever they in the site.
Um well, I I think. This is a great conversation, thank you all. Um. I I understand the, I understand what I, I very much agree with it. Um we already have. But it would be properties. And I think what this is doing is this is just telling us. Where if we, what zoning do we want our mixed use development? Potentially. Together. So we we're not doing it yet, we're gonna do it after this, but. When we decide where would zones we want this to go in. That'll tell Swansea where we want mixed use developments to happen, right? We these aren't gonna be in the whole of town. They're gonna be in a very specific part of town. Um and I, again, we we do already have a few.
So that's helpful, cuz one of the things I've been thinking of is a recently approved application for landscaping business that also had some, I think it wasn't.
Apartments or something. Yeah.
That is exactly what.
Yes.
Right, and that's the exact right part of town that.
So so why do, I mean, maybe I'm just overthinking this, I don't know, but why, why do we need this?
You're not overthinking it, because the more and more I think about it. That's my one question, is A, do we need this? And B, if we don't need this, then what action do we take?
Yeah, I don't see why we even need this if we're already permitting bit by, you know, these.
We are, but we might need it, and it goes to what Adam was saying about. If we know we don't want mixed use in, we'll say, Business One up there or wherever the heck, then we don't put it as an allowable use in there. That's, oh, if we never have the definition at all, then. You could probably put it anywhere, you know, if it went in case by case, but you can, you can stay where it's not going.
Okay, but when would we ever turn? We ever?
So it's.
Go ahead.
Well.
It's basically.
Yeah, well, a case in point is up there on uh uh West Street Extension where they wanted to put a repair shop for bikes. That'd be a mixed use if you did it, cuz that's where our culture.
One other thing, this is, this is probably gonna take the place of our multi-tenant facility. Right, cuz we're gonna phase that out of there, and this is gonna be about what that is.
Yeah. Uh. In a lot of, in a lot of municipalities. In a lot of municipalities, mixed uses itself, there's not any use, um. Uh for example, I can think of, at least it does in market municipalities that have uh mixed use, small and mixed use large, they put their whole zones. Eventually, maybe, I don't know if something needs it, but this at least outlines where we think. Mixed uses should go, and. Cuz we're not gonna rename all of our zones right now, right this year, that's not gonna happen this year. Uh but thi- this might lay a foundation for that future possibility, I don't wanna go over ahead of this.
See.
Rather than try to build a petrol that will. Fly to every zoning district. Why don't we simply, I simply amend. The uses. In whatever districts we choose. No mixed use shown to that.
You can do this, you can do, that's the same thing.
Solve this problem. And clarify. In where the districts we want to, what we want to. And prohibition with those mixed use.
The the problem with that, I will say, is that you're always allowed to have accessory uses. So if you're in a residence district, you're always allowed to have a place business. Uh there there are some uses by right that you are allowed to, that doesn't necessarily classify you as a mixed use. Mixed use more so refers to uh develop and have a commercial and industrial. Or residential and rebuild. That's more so what mixed use means.
The type of language that I suggested. Can be applied to. All the major districts you just talked about, and not to. Residential where you have. Accessory use. So, you know, this one. Um. This would be a petrol, we're trying to create. Everything is. And we really need separate parts.
Yeah, so I think one thing that we have to consider is, we take any district and say, well, these are all things that are allowed in that district. We we want to allow all those things in a a single building. And the answer is probably not. Uh because, you know, once again, the safety factor comes up, right? You don't want a manufacturing or chance of something, you know, blowing causing some catastrophic. Events, you know, and above that, people are living, right? We 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 have to be smart about it.
Yeah, the fire department generally, yeah, if if they say no, then then it's a no. Regardless, what the planning board says, but right, yeah, those safety issues are always there, and that is a way, you know, if the planning board wants to deny it on a safety issue, that is. Something you can deny on, but you can't just. Deny on anything.
You know the property they built, the uh with storage units by the gas company?
Oh, yeah.
Now, what if that guy didn't wanna build that? What if he wanted to build like a a hundred foot long? Concrete block building. But divided up. Would he be allowed to do that there?
If it fits setbacks and every other part of the zoning and.
And that zoning there is commercial, motion.
Then, yeah, then he can build it there.
So.
Now, it depends on what the use would be, though, because he'd be back before the planning board. To decide what he wants to put in there, if it's not an allowable use, or the planning board has a safety issue with it, then it doesn't go in.
But if he builds the building s- as speculation.
Mm-hmm.
And then he gets a tenant, say, uh a sound studio wants to move in, but they only want twenty feet and the thirty foot deep of the building. Next guy comes along, but he's a shipping guy.
Yep.
He could do that.
If it's an allowable use, there, and if it it meets code, you know, if the fire department has a problem with it, then there's a problem. But the planning board. Just takes a look at it as to, you know, if you have the parking for that business, if he didn't allow enough parking for, we'll say, they wanna put a retail in there eventually. Wasn't enough parking, he didn't have to tear something down or get a variance or something like that, if it didn't fit. The planning board would decide on that. That criteria. Right. And that would be, yeah, it would be a mixed use, it's like what we're talking about.
Instead of calling it a a contractor bay.
Yeah, it'd just be a mixed use building, and we have a bunch of.
It's useful, yeah, a better, better definition, I think.
I think it is too, you know, it's a broader definition. But again, we can. Restrict it.
Yeah, Victoria, Victoria brought up such a good point, cuz I was thinking about that as I was writing this and. Um you know, maybe in the future, we don't need this definition, uh. But I I think now helps a little bit, uh that's something that we certainly. But I don't know, we're lost, or we're looking at temperature.
If hearing this. You're talking about uses, right, and I wonder if we don't need to strengthen our definitions of uses, because you. I know what residential needs, I know what office needs, I know retail.
Yeah.
Um service, I mean, I'd love to find service, I don't.
We need to.
Well, we're going to.
Yeah, we need to.
I I'm just wondering where the where the true weaknesses are, you know, what what is the real problem that we're trying to fix, or whatever.
So I I think this this definition, and I I will say contractor based facilities, just as a, as a phrase. I think that came into, that came into existence because. Our code of the COVID to come into this, right?
But it.
I was.
We know, I think we were unclear about.
No, that's sorry, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Um so our code wasn't super clear.
Right.
On how these should be defined.
Yeah, what what that is.
And so there is a need to to have broad, like better definitions in our film. Do we do it this way, or do we do it, just do we just update our definitions, right?
Well, question then.
Yeah.
Technical question, can we, do we have to update our definitions by one definition at a time and have the voters vote on each single definition, or can we just? Update the definition section?
One at a time, one at a time, but we do need to do that, you know, that's, that was a problem with with the Bay Hill Road. It was a contractor bay, but it came down to definition as to uses, that's what it boiled down to uses, and that's why I went to CBA.
Distribute, yeah.
Yep, and they and they argue that it wasn't a service, or service wasn't allowed there. So we need to beef up our definitions of of service establishment, and we need to clarify, because we use just service, then we use service establishment. In different areas in those zoning, we'll just clarify that, yeah, personal service too.
Personal.
So, yeah, we need to just clarify that and some of the other definition, Victoria had some definitions of, I don't know if I have them here, but they're on contractor.
Yes, and that's on this.
That's in this one too.
But.
Well, that's the same that you had before.
Also, okay.
Right.
Because I'm not clear what the problem is that this is solid for us, maybe if we went into finer detail and and worked on. Um either establishing or. More uh improving our definition of certain words, and the and the ones that Mark and I were kicking around were, um what. Um service establishment and professional service business, those were two that um. Seem to keep rearing their ugly heads in our lives, and and I also. I don't know if it's necessary to define contractors' structural services, but if we do. Then I think it makes sense to have a sort of. Two levels, as as is shown here.
Light construction and heavy construction.
Pretty much, yeah.
One has the equipment we talked about in. Yeah, the other is very, you know, different.
Yeah.
And right, the service ones, we do have to define as well, but we don't have professional service business in our zoning anywhere.
Yeah.
We don't, but we do have service establishment and we have service. And, you know, we do have to define that, and we have the, wanna move on to that, wanna let this one go for a while?
So, yeah, I I think maybe, um, there's a couple of hours we can take. We can do this or beef up our definitions, because again, these, you can do this now. You can, without this definition, you become a planning board with a proposal, and you could do this. Um. So I think if we beef up our definitions. That will maybe it would be made to be to be that.
So so maybe the problem that this is working to solve is which, you said this before, which zone this kind of.
Right.
Activity would be taking place in, and then maybe the question is, um, do we currently? Have this in the proper zones, is there?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And and we need the definitions for that, but if we do that, we need this, we need a definition to define it, if we're gonna do that, because. Right now, we do have several areas that have these, one of them right down here and there around, so without the definition in there, and without being being determined which zone it is in. People could come and petition our board to say, well, you know, you've allowed it over here, 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 and here, so we should be able to do it there, and they'd probably beat us in court, but if it's in our zoning, defining it and where it can go, then.
It's nice to have a mixed use definition, a lot of code will have a definition for a variation of mixed use. So if we wanted to define mixed use. I it it can't hurt, it can't hurt, it might be unnecessary, but it can hurt.
And it could go under the special exception part of the, you know, the zoning, you know, in whatever zone it's in, it can be as a special exception mixed use. Gives it a little bit more, you know, scrutiny. It's going in there. So, so, yeah, hey, we can. We can think about wording on that and and use it as a definition, probably. Or as a new definition, the mul- mixed use development. But we probably ought to move on to other definitions and think about that. Anybody, nobody?
Yeah.
And we will move on.
Let's go.
Okay, let's move on to the service establishment, we have. Um any establishment includes primary activity is a provision of assistance as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. And I had a small interpretator, a little addition to that, which is the same thing, but. It says a service establishment provides a skilled service, personal labor or expertise, as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. That covers them all, that covers licensed people, that covers plumber, that covers all the professional people. Whether they do a service, like whether it's dog sitting or whatever the professional thing is that they're doing, it covers them all, and it's a service.
Yeah, for me, the light bulb moment was um not providing a product or a tangible.
Yeah, and that's what it is, yeah. Yeah, and it's a, it's a, just provide a skilled service, personal labor or expertise, as opposed. Yeah, the definition is a service establishment provides a skilled service, personal labor. Or expertise as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity.
Or mobile teacher.
What?
On what?
Or mobile teacher.
Detailing, um it, that might be a service, because we did, we have specifically, we have. Yeah.
You don't need a license.
It probably would be, you know, they're, what they're, they aren't working on engines and that type of stuff, it's not a garage, cuz we have a a gas station garage facilities in our zoning, if it was too close to that, then they'd have to fall into that category. But detailing probably isn't, is probably under a service.
Okay, but it's the part not.
Right, yeah, it's probably is, it would be a service. And if it's in whatever zone, you know, it's going in wherever things going, but. So. Wanna use that definition then? Uh what else does that bring us to?
And then we can do away with professional service business.
Yeah, let's do away with that, cuz it covers everybody licensed and everything.
Thank you, Reverend, and all.
Okay. So we decided to define service establishment. And we decided that the definition on service establishment would be a service establishment provides a skilled service. Personal labor or expertise as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. I will. I'm gonna tell you right now. Yeah. Because. We aren't doing that, because that covers.
Okay, so this is.
The licensed part of it covers all of that.
Okay.
And we also need to go into the zoning, probably when we're gonna do this definition thing, and just probably any um. Any place where I've mentioned service or service staff, change it all to service establishment, I think, would probably be better. And then that's one definition for everything, cuz we mentioned just straight service, and I think we have personal service in there too. We do, but we probably ought to just change them all to service establishment, and then we have a different.
The key difference there is personal service, if you like. Beauty products, hair, you know, that kind of stuff, service establishment.
But they aren't, still aren't, you know, providing anything, any, any product or that, they are.
Yeah.
It's a service.
Yeah.
I would think that they would fall underneath that.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah, we'll we'll. We'll we'll try to poke holes in it, and if we can't, then this will be good.
Right. Where does that bring us up to now, let's see.
One little.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Back, Richard. And then, you know, those uh. Under the services action, if you're, if you're talking about a beautician or a dietician or something like that. They're gonna have product in there to sell. Also.
But they don't produce it.
No, but it's. It's because.
Retail self.
So retail service.
Now, would that be an accessory use? If you're a beautician?
I'm not sure.
It could be, and a case by case by the planning board, you know, if they were planning on selling something and their main business was gonna be selling those things, and their little side business was was putting beauty aids on person, that's a whole different story, but if their side part of it was, like he's talking about accessory. Selling just products that they use there, and their main business was. Beauty aid, applying them to people, then it's different, we'd find that out at the site.
And it starts to be allowed within that zone, yeah, so.
So so. I have two definitions that pertain to services, okay, one is from a personal service shop or service establishment. And the second one is retail sales comma services, so we gotta deal with that.
So we need to put service establishments after that retail sales.
Services.
Yeah, it will, so we need to just add service establishments after the retail sales. As a, as a separate use, or actually maybe even a separate item on there, but that's, that's what those. As a, as a separate use, or actually maybe even a separate item on there, but that's, that's what those, that's what it means in those areas.
I think that was intended to be retail sales and services, but that still doesn't quite.
Yeah.
That, that, that's totally quiet.
So maybe we take the word services off that word?
Yeah, and add in.
And, and, and then stick with professional service shop or service establishment, figuring that covers what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's great.
And there are a couple of other places in zoning that has that same type of thing, retail and sales and service.
We'll get this.
We'll look at it all, yeah.
Yeah, what we, we're gonna dig into. Uh, RSA's, just make sure that this is good, we believe, but.
Yep.
For now, it's.
Great.
And we were so lucky last time with all our zoning changes, we're gonna try to go beyond, what was it, thirteen or fourteen, that's, that's time.
I know, well. Yeah, it has to be done.
Zones, this, you know, it's much easier to think about it, we're not doing.
And it has to be done, just for us and for the app. Brings us to multi-tenant. And, uh, and the fact that we have no real authority to approve multi-tenant applications like we've been doing for the past, really thirty-five years. You know, the, the statute only gives us authority to approve or not approve site plans and nothing else. And we did get a letter, this is copy of that letter we got from our attorney probably six months ago or something like that, saying, same thing, that, hey, you guys, uh. We don't think that you should be doing that, and he's right. And, and the way, I think. That, under the staff comments, it says staff poses the following, multi-tenant applications are phased out immediately. We could make also start phasing them out on January first, twenty twenty-five, either one. But, yeah, either way, okay, and then number two, any new tenant moving into a multi-tenant space. Will be reviewed administratively through the planning department to determine if there is a change of use. Number three, if the new tenant is a change of use, the planning board will see. That tenant at a regularly scheduled meeting and determine if site plan review is necessary. If no site plan review is necessary, the applicant will be informed that no planning board approval is required. So that's a pretty good way to handle it, I think, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
It allows us to look at the entire site plan and say, okay, this new use is gonna generate a million cars, and we need to really.
Yeah.
Sort of revamp that.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's a different use and, and sending it to the planning board, if, if they say it's a different use, the planning board can say, well, no, we don't think it's a different use. And do it that way, but at least it's reviewed before it gets to the planning board, and if it's a no-brainer, then it's a no-brainer, you know, they can do it. So I think it's a good way to handle it, and I don't know exactly if we need a motion just to, um, stop.
Well, we do also move that we accept the staff's recommendations.
Except what, oh, except staff, okay, let's, uh, let's, let's have a motion to immediately phase out. The, uh, multi-tenant application, so. And, go ahead, Richard, Richard has something to say, I know you made most, but nobody's seconded it.
Just the, if we eliminate the number one. That we still receive from. The planning. Uh, what was done, what was presented and what was done, or what the reason for, they're not coming to us.
Yep, good, good point, yeah, that staff just sent us the board a memo as to who came in and what and why they determined.
Which should be doing anyway, preparing it anyway, right, for the file.
Yeah, but not.
But not to the board, if they just send out an email, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to have us receive what was presented. And what, you know, what their decision was, and based on what, um, and for what reason they, you know, they decided that we didn't need to see it.
That's fine, if you guys wanna do that, and we'll say we give it out of administrative processes that you guys. Now, so this would be a good against the grain, but.
Uh, let's, I don't. We'll kind of charge with oversight too.
Oh, we are, yeah, definitely are.
Uh, I'm thinking more along the lines of like, what we said, don't require, um, planning board, we don't need those.
Yeah, but the. I don't, yeah, like the sign permits and that type of stuff, you guys do the sign permits now, the board used to do them here, you know, we designated you guys to do it, so we just, we do. And I think, uh, home occupation, you know, I think you guys sit here, though, obviously those are there, so. Yeah, there are a few things like that, and it's still falling in that category there. But, uh, Richard had the point there, and I agree with his point, that it would be great just to bring a memo to the board, so. The board won't be caught off guard if somebody comes in and says, well, you know, these guys didn't blah, 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 and. So let's do that. So getting back to the motion. You, we're, we're looking for a motion to immediately phase out multi-tenant applications, since we don't have the authority to do it. Okay, motion, motion by Michael York to phase out our multi-tenant application, seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye, I, I all opposed. Okay, so, so that's through there, and the, the attorney, as I remember before, uh. He said that, uh, and he was correct, that the planning board has the authority to decide who had, who needs to come in for a, uh. An application, who needs to submit a site plan, and who doesn't, and that's taken care of in there, so. Even though we don't approve the multi-tenant ones there, they could come in there, here. If they need to anyways, and the planning board decide whether they, as it says here, whether they need to come in for a full site plan or not. And it would be, and at sometime in the future, the planning board could, could decide whether they wanna do a, a, a minor site plan. As opposed to a major site plan, if we both, if we have a bunch of those, they could nail that way, it's, it's still a site plan, not a multi-tenant. But for now, it's just, we got the motion to phase it out, so we're gonna phase that out, and then let's, uh, have a motion to accept. Let's have a motion to accept the, uh, the proposal by the staff. Regarding as to how they're gonna handle the multi-tenants coming into the office. And it's written right out here in number two and three, I can read it through, but I already did, I think everybody's okay with that, with the addition that. Um, any multi-tenant that the staff makes a decision on. Is a memo comes out to the planning board as to what they did and to who it was. Okay, motion by Richard to do that, is there a second? Saying it on Michael York, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the staff makes a decision. And definitely, we disagree with the decision.
Then the planning board can have the staff contact the applicant, and whatever the decision was, whether the applicant. Wasn't supposed to have that, according to the planning board, or were supposed to, whatever it was, they have them come into the planning board, that's how it would be handled. Yeah.
And also the other day, like. We don't have planning board power, so it's like, is this person, uh, goes by the approved site plan? Like, does everything meet those standards?
Yeah.
If that approved site plan changes anyway, you back.
And anybody anyways that comes before our staff. And they're upset with the decision staff made, they can always come to a planning board meeting anyway, and address the board regardless, and the board will decide what happens.
So let's keep it all the air.
Have to follow. Oh, we need to vote on that? No, because he interrupted. I'm glad you reminded me, I gotta go right by that one, so. Thank you, Steve, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, I, I all opposed. Okay, so we're gonna go by the staff recommendations, staff's gonna handle multi-tenants from this point on. Great, thank you.
If, if, we'll try to have the memos out, uh, we're gonna do this.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's, that'll work out good. Mark, go ahead.
So you'll, you'll send those memos out as, as they occur?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that'd be fine, like, in an email.
Well, we could also put them in that package.
However you wanna do it, however you guys wanna do it, we can leave it up to them, right? It doesn't matter, we, board doesn't need to, as long as we get the information, we don't care.
If we do, one of you guys will like it, just let us know.
Well, I just, I just don't know, you know, you know, from Steve's point, right, if there's a timing issue.
Yeah.
You know, we like to be efficient in getting back to the.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't be, since they didn't submit an application, so there wouldn't be no clock issue, you know, RSA clock issue, but. Where the applicant.
Not just from them saying, go ahead, and then all of a sudden, two weeks later, we're looking at it, it's like.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, at, at, at worst, they'll be out of the package. Yeah. So you'll, you'll probably see that we can advance.
And when you're meeting with the, the applicants anyways, you, you can just tell them that, you know, this is. Gonna, and get it on the planning board, not having a problem with it.
I think that's.
Brings us to site plan review, planning board training.
So I, uh, bump that to the next meeting.
Okay.
Cause I thought that this was gonna go a lot longer, and, uh, and there's more stuff I wanna add to the training, so.
So, so you're gonna train, right? Or you're gonna, you just give us, what, what's that all about?
Uh, like a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, okay, alright.
Reminder of like, what the board is, what the board does. RSA parameters, things like that.
Alright. Our next meeting.
Yep, we don't wanna get you guys going.
No, oh, we don't wanna, okay. So, anybody else have anything for the meeting?
I learned by listening.
Business that I mentioned to you. Uh, what did you do with it? Pardon me?
How would we have the CD, what decision we made today?
Okay, but she is, she's running your business there now. With, uh, the approval.
All the one next to affordable moving, you know, I saw that there the other day.
So I like, I need to sign it in center. Uh, sign permits as well as the. Or for tenor.
Won't be multi-tenant after time.
So she, so, yeah, I guess we use any of the segments, yeah, we actually let her know and read.
So rightly, she should not be doing business.
It sounds like, by rights, it sounds like someone moved in there and is doing business, and they haven't been approved by the board, by the sound of the rights. And that, that's not the first time that's happened. Yeah, you know about it, and, and I'm sure that you'll get her into the board here. Unless it's handled as a multi-tenant, which maybe you won't.
There.
We'll get a memo on that. Just that one's bought by the lots. Whatever that gets figured out. Affordable moving is still here. Anything else for the meeting? Nope, if not, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
The second, okay, second by Charlie, all the favorite, they can be saying aye.
Aye.
All those votes, we are.